It is six o'clock, so I'm going to call to order the Bend City Council Business Meeting. The mayor is currently in Portland and is online. There she is. So I will be running the meeting. We'll start with introductions and Councillor Platt, we'll start with you today.
Steve Platt, he's him.
Megan Norris, she her.
Megan Birkin, she her.
Mike Riley, he him.
Ariel Mendez, he him.
Gina Franzosa, she her.
Elnie Keebler, she her.
First on the agenda today for good of the order is the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation, which I have the honor of reading. Whereas domestic violence affects every person in the city of Bend and within our communities, whereas whether as a victim or survivor, or as a family member, friend, partner, neighbor, educator, employer, employer, or coworker, and whereas systemic oppression and inequity create a culture in which some communities are especially targeted for violence and experience greater barriers to access services. And whereas intimate partner violence affects more than 12 million people in the United States every year, with nearly three in 10 women and one in 10 men in the U.S. having experienced rape, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner. Access to a gun makes it five times more likely that an abusive partner will kill his female victim. And every month in the United States, an average of 70 women are shot and killed by an intimate partner. And whereas now, more than ever, we are being reminded that we are capable of change, and each person makes choices every day that either support or challenge a culture of violence. And whereas every individual in our community and within our city has a role to play in moving change forward and promoting health and safety for all people by not tolerating violence, by promoting accountability, and by participating in the efforts to end violence. And whereas new efforts build on foundations laid by dedicated advocates, preventionists, activists, and other partners who have been doing this work for decades. And whereas by taking action where you work, play, learn, worship, or live, change is possible and domestic violence is preventable when we are all working together to end systemic oppression, the root cause of domestic violence. Now, therefore, we, the Bend City Council, hereby proclaim October 2025 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Bend and encourage all residents to join in this observance.
Second, I'm sorry, should I make a motion? Please, I move to accept proclamation. Second.
All right, Councillor Franzosa and we'll say Councillor Norris for the, for the second. And we have with us, Abby, oh, sorry, all in favor of accepting this proclamation. Sorry, I got ahead of myself. All right, we have with us Abby Rowland from Saving Grace. Do you want to come up here and say a few words?
Well, thank you, Mayor Keebler. She's been a lovely partner for us. And thank you, councillors, for recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. At Saving Grace, every day we walk alongside survivors and their children. And we appreciate you helping to bring light, something that often stays quite hidden. Domestic violence affects every neighborhood and income level. Here in Bend, a lot of folks think that it does not exist prominently here. It absolutely does. You see that every day. Proclamations like this help shine a light, and the light saves those lives. We do invite the community to learn warning signs and respond with, I believe you, how can I help you? We also encourage the community to share Saving Grace's 24/7 helpline and local resources and check in on friends, coworkers, neighbors, and small questions often open doors that lead to safety. Thank you to our partners, Bend Police, county agencies, healthcare, and schools and businesses. And on behalf of survivors, staff, and volunteers, we gratefully accept this proclamation. We recommit to a bend where home is safe for everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have another proclamation for White cane Safety Day, and Councillor Franzosa is going to read that one.
Thank you. Whereas blindness or low vision affects individuals of all ages, all income levels, all genders, and all cultures. And whereas there's, there are different degrees of visual impairment, meaning that someone may be legally blind but can still see colors, shapes, movements, and varying degrees of light. And whereas white canes and guide dogs are tools that people who are blind or visually impaired use to identify themselves and to navigate their environments with greater independence. And whereas white cane and guide dog users have the right to travel safely while enjoying all of the rights, benefits, and privileges of living, working, and playing in this great city of Bend. And whereas everyone should be aware that Oregon law requires drivers to stop and remain stopped until a person carrying a white cane or using a guide dog has completely crossed the street. And whereas October 15th was designated in 1964 by the United States Congress as a day of education and celebration of the advent of white canes and guide dogs for independence and safe travel. Now, therefore, we, the Bend City Council, hereby proclaim October 15th, 2025 to be White cane Awareness Day in Bend and call upon public officials, members of civic organizations, and all people in the city of Bend to join together as we work to ensure that the rights, benefits, and privileges of life in our lovely city are safely available to all community members and visitors who are blind or visually diverse. And just a brief statement, and then you can please make a motion after that. I just want to thank Charlene Wills for requesting this proclamation be read. Charlene and I served together on the Transportation Bond Oversight Committee, and we found a lot of common ground on safety issues in our roads, though we have very different abilities. And I am, I personally, I have had the honor, I would say, to work on a lot of projects to bring universal design to our public spaces, be them, excuse me, buildings or roads, crosswalks, sidewalks, all those kinds of things. And so I've really come to the belief that universal design is just better design. And it makes, it makes our public spaces more, more, more accessible to all of our community, and that is equity. So I want to thank Charlene for being here today and invite her to come forward to make some comments. And also thank her for all of her involvement on COBAC and her, just her tireless advocacy for accessibility in our community. So thanks, Charlene.
I move to accept the White cane Safety Day proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Maybe I invited Charlene before I was supposed to. That's okay. That's okay.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you, council, for accepting the proclamation. I really appreciate it. And I think everyone else who uses a white cane or a guide dog here in Bend and throughout the state appreciates it too. I had been asked by the Pedestrian Safety Action Coalition to do this. And so I took it upon myself to try. So thanks very much. I have two things to say, well, three, actually. First, since I moved to Bend in 2012, I've appreciated all the progress being made in adding sidewalks, curb ramps, audible signals, et cetera, to make our city more accessible and safer for all pedestrians, really, and for cyclists as well. My only bugaboo is, as many already know, roundabouts, but they are here to stay. And so I hope that the engineers who put them in will remember those of us who can't see when they put in the audible signal portions and so on of them. Now, there are two rules that everyone really needs to pay attention to and follow. They aren't laws, unfortunately, but the one concerns guide dogs. If you see a guide dog, most of them are lovely to look at. They wag their tails, they are friendly, but please, please do not beckon to them, call to them, approach them, or try to feed them when they are working. If you want to pet a guide dog, ask the owner first. Sometimes we'll say yes, and sometimes we'll say no. Don't be offended. It's only because, just as if you were driving and you were distracted, your eyes were taken off the road by any distraction, an accident could occur. So if a guide dog is distracted from being our eyes, such an accident could also occur. The second thing is, if you see someone with a white cane, do not assume that that person doesn't know what he or she is doing just because he's using something out in front of him to tap and feel the pavement. Never, ever go up to that person and touch him or grab him or her without first verbalizing that you were present. We may not even hear you, and if you come up behind me and grab me, I am liable to turn around and hit you with a cane. And that's no joke. I actually almost did it one time and scared someone to death. Well, almost. But just remember, you don't want to be touched when you're walking. We don't either. Ask if you can help. Say, do you need assistance, or can I help you? And if the person says yes, then great. If he says no, don't be offended by that either. Because usually, those who are using white canes, as the proclamation says, are using them as a tool to help with their independence. Thanks again, everybody.
Thank you, Charlene.
We're going to actually give you a copy.
In an accessible format.
All right. Next, we're moving on to council action and reports. And first on the list is letters, and I'm going to turn it over to the mayor to talk about, about that item.
Thank you. So just wanted to start by following up on my email today that over the weekend, there was sort of a letter and statement developed by Oregon mayors in support of Mayor Wilson of Portland to push back about the federalization of troops that are being sent to Portland. And I actually got to see Mayor Wilson today on my tour of City Hall, and he was very thankful to have mayors, not just from the Portland area, but from other places, standing up together to stand up for our rights of Oregonians and uphold our oath to the Constitution and talk about how Portland is not the place that apparently people think it is still. And I'll tell you, it's been very pleasant here downtown Portland while I've been here. So I just wanted to highlight that. I did want to ask council about another letter that has come up in the past day or so as something that we could do to advocate for affordable housing. We have the Verde Pines Project and the Cascade Landing Project that were part of our investments of pro housing and affordable housing dollars that are also seeking a tax exemption that requires them to present to the different taxing districts. And so they went through the perks board, which did not reach a decision, and the county and the schools are, have not heard their exemption requests yet. I'd like to send a letter to probably, possibly both the county and the schools, a separate letter to each, but just explaining why this is important, and we hope that they will take it up and consider these exemptions, which are really pretty important for the projects to leverage a lot of state and federal money and get hundreds of affordable apartments out there on the streets of Bend. So wanted to just make sure that council was okay with working on that. I will send out a draft by the end of the week. That's already been started, but wasn't really ready for, for primetime tonight yet. In conjunction with staff and the providers who are requesting those exemptions.
Thank you. Next, for council reports, this time we are going to start with Councillor Platt, if he is ready.
I'm ready.
As the future always is.
I'm, I'm, I'm ready, yeah. Just brief, brief updates this time. I did have the opportunity to go with Councillor Franzosa and Rick Russell to look at some of the safe parking sites at Westside, Westside Church earlier this week. And I'm just, I'm just amazed at what we're able to do to make, to bring a further rung on to the, on the housing continuum for folks in our community. I'm so pleased with what's being done there. So well done, and I was happy to see that in place. Obviously, we all attended the joint, joint meeting earlier this week, and I was pleased with, with dovetails along with that, with our thoughts about how the flexibility for the with, with dovetails along with that, with our thoughts about how the flexibility for the TSSA is uh, gonna go on, go forward, and still having, having real guiding light of of coming with a, a personal solution or a permanent solution, but also having some grace uh, as we work towards that, that personal solution. And the last thing I'll say is uh, echoing the, the mayor's con- uh, comments, I do think about uh, my brothers and sisters in arms who are being in a tough spot uh, these days, um, being asked to do uh, a lot for the country and still trying to hold uh, hold to the oath that they've sworn to the Constitution. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you.
And went to some of the, last of the welcoming week events, went to a great concert by Cecilia Zabala, who did a lot of events um, uh, last, it was a couple of Fridays ago, and it was just really moving and um, a really pleasant and nice concert. Um, and then uh, of course, went to the city and county joint meeting. Um, and just echo uh, Counselor Platt's statements. I'm really looking forward to finding a solution, but also um, you know, realizing that there's a lot of great progress that is happening out there. Our service providers are doing great work, and we need to make sure that um, we are supporting the community and actually finding um, solutions and, and housing for people, transitioning them in a way that's thoughtful and caring. Um, and then lastly, we had our public contract subcommittee yesterday with Councilors Riley and Franciosa. Um, just really interesting to kind of learn more about how the city contracts with all our various um, uh, you know, services and um, looking forward to, to taking more action on that and the way that we offer those and um, and also finding ways to be more inclusive in some of our contract options moving forward.
I will go next. Um, I was also able to go to one of the final welcoming week events. Uh, this one was on matriarchal systems, and it was a really fascinating conversation. Um, I had the coordinated Houses Response Office Board meeting on Monday. Um, we talked a lot about um, data and how to get better data, not only for ourselves as elected officials um, to be able to understand the problem, but also to the community and how we can keep working together. And um, we heard a presentation uh, from the uh, Dr. Prus from the National Vehicle Residency Collective, which does really, really interesting uh, coalition work all around the country um, for people that are living out of their vehicles. And um, I think we'll probably be hearing more from, from him and that organization um, as we look to finding solutions um, for people that are living outside or in their vehicles. Um, then we had the Regional Housing Council meeting immediately after that. Um, we spent a lot of time talking about how um, we, as three very different counties and as uh, the Confederate tribes of Warm Springs, how can we work together um, and find areas of common interest? And talked about really wanting to duplicate um, the efforts of um, the, the um, the regional alliance that, that was put together in the legislature um, from Central Oregon um, as, as a housing council. So that was a really great um, conversation as well. Um, wanted to share some sad news. The, I, I spoke last time about the Central Oregon Disability Support Network um, losing their funding. They were denied their appeal. And so um, there will, um, they are trying to find ways now to, to um, find local and, and um, national funding to continue to support the very, very important work that they do for over four thousand families in our community. And just wanted to highlight one more thing. Um, Indigenous Peoples' Day is coming up. Um, it is on October thirteenth. There are two events that I could find. There might be more. Um, COCC is um, showing the documentary called Un- Uncovering Boarding School, um, which is um, on the thirteenth between twelve and two. So that is a Monday. And OSU Cascades on Saturday, the eleventh, between one and five, is holding the first People's Celebration with um, the Confederate Tribes of Warm Springs. And there's gonna be a ceremony and food and dancing. So it sounds like a really great event. So just wanted to highlight that for everybody as well. And I'll pass it over to Council Riley.
Um, I wanted to just, first of all, express um, maybe we sat the last meeting, my gratitude for the Bend Roots Revival that happened September twenty-four, or September twelfth, thirteen. Um, this is a great celebration of local musicians and local um, bands and, and all the people who put that together, Mark Ransom and all the volunteers have been doing it for, I think it's like fifteen plus years now. It was just a great local community event, and I encourage people to look for it next year in two thousand twenty-six, Bend Roots Revival. I also attended two other welcoming week events. One was the Your Invisible Neighbor, a film by local filmmaker Bola Gabadebo, and then Opium Discussion that was at the new, newer Spice Land Restaurant downtown. It was a great veteran. Um, and then one called Threads of Belonging, which was a combination of uh, in a cub, Koftun, was a Ukrainian folk singer and a Native American uh, rapper Scott Koama, known as Blue Flames um, from the Confederate Tribes of Warm Spring. It was a really interesting um, event that brought together two different traditions that are threatening and, and dealing with resilience and trauma in a variety of different ways in our world today. Um, I actually attended the first screening in Bend of that uh, movie, Uncovering Boarding Schools: Stories of Resilience. It was at Power Theater last week. It's an OPV documentary. I'm excited to hear that it's gonna screen again. Um, I highly recommend it. It tells the story of a woman named Abby Hall. She's an old member of the Clamats tribe. As she tries to understand the impact of native boarding schools on her own family. And then in the process, it really uncovers the, the legacy of trauma and cultural erasure and shows how profoundly people in the native community are still struggling uh, for healing and justice as a result of all that happened to them through the boarding schools. So it was a very sober, truth-telling event. And I think um, I was really um, honored and just um, you know, really appreciate them telling the truth about our story as a country. I think it's particularly important in today's climate. Um, the last thing I wanted to mention is I went to something called the, On the Road to the Bend Venture Conference that was held at Worthing Brewing um, late last week, where ten businesses that not all just from Bend, but regionally competed to make it onto the stage. I think five were promoted to the actual Bend Venture Conference, including a local company called Toast Wear, which turns your favorite outdoor jacket into a little mini heater where you can adjust the temperature. It's actually pretty cool, and they won the three thousand dollar um, audience prize. So just a big shout out to the impressive innovation and entrepreneurship from all the people who um, were participating in that event. And there was great turnout from the local community.
Tremendous.
Uh, thank you. On Thursday, September twenty-fifth, I attended the city of Ben's Accessibility Advisory Committee, and I just wanted to share uh, some of the comments that members made about what losing support for organizations like the Central Oregon Disability Support Network means. Um, I know uh, Mayor Protem mentioned this, and it was incredibly emotional to hear the heartfelt stories about what it means to lose this funding. These programs are a lifeline for some families in our community, and um, losing that funding has put a lot of people in pretty desperate situations, and you can tell that they, they feel desperate. Um, so I just wanted to say that I think, you know, if we are hopeful that we can find um, additional support, these organizations are going to try to band together, but it's hard not to see how this will mean anything but a cut in services. Um, and I think stepping back when you contrast that with the news about how much it will cost to send troops to cities in this country that are unnecessary and unwanted, it's, it's pretty heartless. And so I just wanted to express my gratitude to the mayor for joining a statement of solidarity describing how unnecessary it is and how unwanted it is to send troops. And it's, it's just so wasteful. So um, I'm glad that uh, we have at least our shared values and commitment here and um, to the families that are experiencing this, we hear you, and um, we're gonna do our best to try to find what, what additional support we can.
I, on September eighteenth, I attended the Core Area Advisory Board meeting. Um, I just want to thank that committee. Um, they are really tireless in their dedication to activating the core area, and they've started a new uh, theme with each of their meeting, uh, meetings, bringing in um, representatives to talk about various issues that affect the core area, could impact the core area. And I thought that was really valuable, and I thank them for their leadership there. Um, as well as staff Jonathan Taylor, of course, for enabling all of that to happen. Um, I toured the safe parking venue at the West Side Church with Counselor Platt. It was, um, it's a, it's a really great venue, and I um, I thank the church for making that space available and for their leadership on um, housing and homelessness. Um, I want to express gratitude to all of my fellow council members for the robust discussion that we had with the county um, on Monday, the twenty-ninth, or twenty-ninth, I believe. Um, the days are running together. Um, I, you know, it's a tough, is a really tough issue. Um, and there's a lot of confusion in the community, and so I, I am glad that we had that conversation. Um, and I, I'm, I'm glad that we're gonna be bringing some more clarity to how we are gonna support um, the most vulnerable folks in our, in our community. Um, I want to thank also uh, Councilors Norris and Riley um, and city staff Justin Sweet, Sam Nelson, Mike Gaffney, Ryan Oster, and Russ Grayson um, for the public contracts meeting that um, was really well our plan for. Uh, we had a really informative and productive conversation um, about innovative uh, contracting um, practices or alternative contracting practices, I should say. Um, and then also the innovative thinking that the team is doing um, into really some mundane topics and some not. Insurance and bonding are pretty mundane, but um, those are actual barriers to um, emerging small businesses, to working for the city. And we spend, what, a hundred and seventy million dollars every two years in contract, something like that? Um, it's a lot of money, and it's a lot of opportunity for businesses in our community. So the more that we can make those opportunities available, I think the better. So thanks to everyone for their work on that. Um, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Keebler.
Thank you. Um, so just a few things. Um, this week was part of the sort of kickoff here locally um, with a group of staff and the city manager and myself, who are part of the Bloomberg City Leaders, City Leadership Initiative. Um, and it's in partnership with Bloomberg Philanthropies and Harvard. And this is the program that accepted us in and is helping um, cities across the globe really um, tackle a, a problem and really dive into it. Um, and the issue that um, the team is working on with these additional resources is around wildfire residency. So really cool to see that project get started, and I think staff are gonna be able to use these resources to bring us some really cool ideas on how we continue our work and meet our goals on wildfire residency with the community, and how we get the community to buy in with us on all of our rules on, on preparing and being better prepared for wildfires. So it was great to kick that off. Um, had our leadership meeting with Mayor Protem and myself and uh, Ben Parks and Rex's leadership last week um, discussed um, you know, how to have a, a more holistic conversation at our meeting coming up in February. We understand they're gonna continue to give us feedback on TIF. You know, we expressed our disappointment. They couldn't reach a decision on the, on the affordable tax exemption, but I think a bigger conversation needs to be had, and we talked about this of what is the vision for how the city is going to grow and urbanize, and how does their vision for parks, how do we understand that better? Um, and maybe even give some feedback on that, the same way they're giving us feedback, and we talk about that together, maybe at our upcoming joint meeting. So more to come on that. Um, we expect to probably meet in February. It's kind of what we're aiming for. Um, I got to meet the COCC president, um, Dr. Greg Pereira, who I missed his um, his meet and greet, so he came to City Hall graciously to talk with me. And really excited for his leadership as he's settling in. I already had a, a few ideas for him, one of which might be some safe parking. Um, and so we'll stay in touch, and um, he seemed really eager to dive in to, to the work at COCC and becoming part of the community. Um, and then the last meeting I'll mention was the District Mapping Advisory Committee, which met last week. They also met today. I missed that meeting today. I haven't had a chance to watch it back. Again, ask everyone to really pay attention to this committee. This is a pretty big deal um, to draw a map. That would maybe be recommended to voters as early as next May. Um, so the next meeting will be next Wednesday from one to three at the county building, if folks are interested in following along with that. Um, and then finally, I've been having conversations since I'm a resident of, of Southeast Bend. That's where I grew up here in Bend, um, and it's where I currently live. Um, been having conversations with neighbors and folks um, who just, there's a lot of change and a lot of growth going on in Southeast right now. Um, and so understandably, people are, are perking up, paying attention. There's been stories in the newspaper. Um, staff have been talking about our next roundtable with neighborhoods, that we've done a few, a few of those before. And um, had a thought that I wanted to make sure council was okay with, of doing a, a Southeast neighborhood roundtable specifically for that area of town to really dive into what's going on out there, what, what the changes are, what they can expect. Um, some of the infrastructure that we may be investing in. So I think that's a really great opportunity, um, also to talk about commercial neighborhoods and things like that, that we know are concerns, um, especially in that part of town and across town. Um, so just wanted to run that by council, make sure there's no objection to that, getting that set up as maybe our next roundtable. No timeline yet, but um, I think that focusing in on that neighborhood and that quadrant might be a good move at this point. So okay, that's it for me.
We love a good roundtable.
We do love a roundtable of the city council. Thank you, mayor. All right, next on uh, the agenda is the visitor section. Um, for those who have signed up, I saw two that have signed up for an item later on um, in the agenda, so I will call you then. Um, visitor's section, you get two minutes. Um, we'll call, I'll call you up. You can go sit at that table. If you want to know how much time you have, you cannot miss it. Um, it is a, it is a very large uh, two-minute countdown uh, for you. Uh, we just ask that you please address us as a body and please refrain from any harmful or violent language. So I will start with Mark. Mark.
Leslie.
Oh, gentle, yeah, gentle Mark. Yeah, sorry.
Mark.
Gentle Mark.
That's my Mark.
Mayor Protem. Council members, hello, mayor. My name is Mark Gentle. I'm a resident of Bend. Later this evening, you'll be asked to grant the Core Area Advisory Board the authority to appropriate public funds. It may seem like a small detail when you read it in the motion. But when I read the words and I read the words of the motion compared to the municipal code, they don't align. The municipal code could not be clearer in that it does not allow an advisory body to bind the city or its agents, including Vura, to financial obligations. And yet, that's exactly what you're proposing to do. The Core Area Advisory Board is very important. It may be the most important advisory committee you have, but you have several. So this is an opening the door to a strategy which would require you to amend the municipal code in order to allow them to begin to bind you to financial obligations, even if it's a small program, even if it's extremely beneficial, which they, this may surely be. It is nevertheless not permitted under the current requirements of the code. And I'm, just for the record, I want to read what the municipal code says. "No board, committee, or commission as a whole, or any member or members individually or collectively, may bind the city, its officers, or agents to financial commitments or obligations." If this allows you to grant the authority that's being proposed, then words have no meanings. Blue is yellow. And we can just all go home and do what we want. Thank you.
Um, wait, just?
Oh, go ahead.
I mean, just so you know, Mr. Gentle, I think if you're able to stay, we'll make sure that we have our legal staff talk about this during that part of the agenda. It's gonna be a while, but you can also watch remotely if you can't stay here.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Leslie Larson.
Good evening. My name's Leslie, and I'm a honoree in Petrosa. I stand before you today to bring, bring attention to an important issue regarding the twenty-acre commercial parcel at the entrance of Petrosa on Northeast Butler Market Road and Northeast Eagle to the Shute's Market Road. This area is critical for the future of our community, and I respectfully ask the city council to be fully aware and uphold the Petrosa Master Plan development. It's essential that the city continues to honor the vision outlined in the original Northeast Bend plan. This plan is not designed to s- This plan is not only designed to serve the residents of Petrosa, but also the broader Northeast community, including those visiting Pine Nursery Park. The goal is creating a fifteen-minute walkable community should remain a central priority for the city's developmental strategy. The original master plan envisioned a grocery-anchored retail center, pedestrian-friendly shopping street framed by mixed-use buildings, live work, townhomes, and vibrant outdoor spaces. These spaces are intended to host events like festivals, farmers' markets, and other civic activities that help broad, breath, build a strong, connected community. I strongly urge the council to uphold this vision. In two thousand twenty-three, the clerical project proposed by Polish was developed with an understanding of affordable housing in alignment with the master plan, committed to balance mixed-use development. However, I understand that the Bella Pines Apartments, a project from a builder based out of Montana, is also being considered. This new development doesn't meet the approved master plan and seems in conflict with the commitments made by Polish Homes and the city of Bend, who are local developers and have already pledged to fulfill the affordable housing goal within the community. I ask, why are we attaining two separate housing authorities? Perhaps this would be a neighborhood roundtable.
Thank you. All right, up next is Don Miles.
Good evening. Protam Perkins, Mayor Keebler and City Councilor. I'm Don Mill. I'm the Bend Area Director for Economic Development for Central Oregon. EDCO has been supporting Bend's economic prosperity for over 40 years by helping grow middle-income jobs and diversify the economy. Thanks for the opportunity to provide some input regarding the electrification policy initiative and its proposed and purposeful intent to reduce carbon emissions in our growing city. Tonight, I would like to share some of EDCO's concerns about the potential electrification policy proposals that are under consideration. EDCO works closely with local employers who invest in our community and provide living weights jobs. What they're telling us is clear. Housing and affordability and infrastructure capacity are among the top challenges. Any electrification policy that increases housing costs or pushes workers further from their jobs may conflict with city council's shared prosperity goal. Policies need to be carefully evaluated from all relevant perspectives. We're also concerned about the strain on our already pressured power grid. A shift to an all-electric requirement for new residential construction could restrict Bend's ability to support existing growing employers and startups and attract target industry businesses as outlined in the Invest Bend Economic Development Strategic Plan. Policies that significantly increase energy demand before infrastructure are in place and to accommodate it would likely work against city council's shared prosperity goal. We believe that the recommendation from city council's own joint advisory committee comprised of the Bend Economic Development Advisory Board, the Affordable Housing Committee, and the Environmental and Climate Committee, which emphasized outreach and education over fees, is a more balanced and appropriate approach. Let's learn from other cities' experiences before moving forward with policies that could have unintended consequences. Thank you.
Next, we have George Schott.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is George Schott, and I am a homeowner in the Petrosa community. I represent a significant group of homeowners who are extremely concerned about the recent application by two developers before the Affordable Housing Department for two projects, Bella Pines and Clerica Workforce, located on the commercial property within our master plan community. This marketplace at Petrosa was designed for this area to highlight the walkability concept and include a grocery store, retail shops, and restaurants to serve Petrosa and the other Northeast Bend residents and Pine Nursery Park. In 2023, Polish sold this property to a local developer. And per Karen Swenson of the City of Bend Planning Department, in a January 24 email to the residents, we were assured by her and the city that the marketplace would move forward as planned under the new owners. While we are aware of the recent law passed in July of '25 regarding affordable housing and the allowance for these projects to proceed on a portion of commercial property, we also feel that the City of Bend needs to review the history of the Petrosa Master Plan and the commitment that the City of Bend, Polish, and Kevin Spencer made to the residents with regard to our marketplace. Also of concern to us, after reviewing one of the applications for Bella Pines, there is language by the applicant that states, "This is urgent to get this moving," while also stating that they have not spoken to the Petrosa community. Our home prices were all based and sold on the marketplace concept, and to have these commitments set aside without explanations or involvement is very disturbing to all of us. This is the largest financial investment most of us have ever made. We are asking for your support regarding this matter so that we can get back to what we as residents were originally promised. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the last in-person speaker is Sarah Odendall.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, councilors. My name is Sarah Odendall, and I'm the interim CEO of the Bend Chamber of Commerce and a resident of Bend. Thanks for the opportunity to share the perspective of the chamber and the broader business community on electrification policies that you're going to take up in a work session in a couple of weeks. We recognize and support the city's climate goals. At the same time, we believe it's critical to balance environmental progress with affordability, reliability, and economic vitality. As you heard from Dawn, and as you all know, housing affordability remains the number one challenge facing Bend's workforce and employers. The median home price is north of $700,000, but affordability for a family at the area median income is closer to $400,000. The city's own housing needs analysis shows we need nearly 2,000 new homes each year, half of them affordable to families below 80% AMI. Every new fee and regulation tied to construction increases costs and risks, making housing even less attainable. We know that our community values energy choice and predictability. Polling, which has been shared with you all previously, shows that 67% of Bend voters oppose fees on natural gas appliances and new homes, and 86% believe that such fees would reduce energy reliability. At the same time, 80% support innovation in renewable natural gas, demonstrating that residents want a practical and balanced path forward. We believe that policy should respect these values while supporting the transition to clean energy. As you know, more than half of Bend's workforce commutes from outside the city limits due to housing costs adding emissions to the transportation system. Climate policy must therefore consider housing affordability and commute patterns alongside energy systems. Innovation is already happening. You all are aware of Cascade Natural Gas piloting a dual-fuel heat pump in 20 homes across Bend. This and other promising solutions should be evaluated before more restrictive measures are put in place. We believe that councils should direct staff to pursue innovation and data-based approaches, not fees that may have unintended consequences. The chamber and our members share your commitment to a sustainable future for Bend. We urge you to adopt a balanced, data-driven approach that protects affordability, preserves energy choice, and invests in innovation and education. And of course, we always look forward to being a constructive, constructive partner as these policies develop. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. We have one person online, actually, James Teeter. Want to unmute yourself?
Hi there.
Hi.
Good evening, council. I'm James Teeter with Bend Bikes. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person. On tonight's agenda, you're being asked to approve construction for the Bend Bike Ways miscellaneous intersection project, including new RRFBs, the flashing beacons at crosswalks at Delaware and Bond and Delaware and Wall. And these will even auto-trigger for people on bikes, which is really cool to see, since the typical buttons on the sidewalks are out of reach for people on bikes. So I want to say thank you for making these crossings safer. It's very important to, to understand the global context of what we're doing here, though. RF, excuse me, RFBs, they, they do help. In, in a recent large Florida study, sites with RFBs installed saw a 69% reduction in total pedestrian crashes. So they are a proven safety measure that we should be using. But the, the critical bend context is that we only install them at two-lane same-direction crossings, the classic double-threat setup. And that's a policy decision, and it's dangerous. And with two lanes going the same way of an unsignaled crossing, one driver can stop while a person begins to cross, but the driver in the next lane often cannot see that person crossing in time. And the first car blocks the view. So the beacon may help the first driver stop, but it doesn't remove the, the second lane threat. And that same Florida study that found the pedestrian crash reduction also found that crap rear-end crash increased by 11% after RFP installation. And so, you know, when one driver stops late for a person crossing, the, the driver behind them often runs into them. And so this shows us the RFB doesn't fix the double-threat geometry. It really just exposes its dangers. So limiting RFBs to only into two-lane crossings, it does two harmful things. It normalizes it and it withholds them at single lanes. So I'm, time's up. Thank you.
Thank you, James. All right, item number four on the agenda is our consent agenda.
Your motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Norris, seconded by Councilor Platt. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to number five.
This is the quasi-judicial public hearing and first reading of an ordinance adopting the Emblem Tax Increment Finance Plan.
Hey, I'm going to open a public hearing. And turn it over to Elizabeth.
So we have a, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding. So I'm going to read a statement and ask council questions, and then ask some questions that are relevant to the audience. So this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and the first thing is for council to declare any ex-party contacts or site visits. Do any of you have any of those to declare? Nope, seeing none. And do any of you have any actual or potential conflicts of interest or other personal interests that would interfere with your ability to serve as an impartial decision-maker in this matter? Seeing none, seeing the mayor shaking her head. All right. So now I'll read a statement for the members of the public in the room. All testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed to the applicable criteria the person testifying believes are applicable to this matter. The failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity for the decision-maker, tonight that's council, or other parties to respond to the issue, will preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. The failure to raise a constitutional issue or other issue with sufficient specificity to allow the decision-maker or other parties to respond will preclude an appeal related to that issue. If prior to the end of the public hearing, a party requests additional time to present testimony, argument, or evidence, council will allow either a continuance or additional time in its discretion for parties to submit additional testimony, argument, or evidence to the record. And did anyone have any challenge to the shaking of heads by the council earlier? I forgot that part. Seeing none. Thank you.
Great. We'll move on to the staff and the applicant presentation. Jonathan, it's all yours.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protam, Mayor Keebler, members of council. My name is Jonathan Taylor. I'm the Urban Renewal Manager. Tonight, I am presenting you the proposed Tax Increment Finance Plan for the Emblem Tax Increment Finance area. A little bit of background, on October 6, 2025, Vura, the Bend Urban Renewal Agency, adopted Resolution 158 establishing the policy for tax increment assistance for housing affordability and growth. This provides property tax rebates for developments, including housing at 90% AMI or less. It was developed in consultation with council advisory bodies and over 25 opportunities for public involvement. The policy has been paused on July 17. It is being reviewed by the Home Committee this fall. On July 16, Vura recommended the creation of this particular new-site-specific TIF area to support housing development. On August 11, 2025, the Planning Commission found that the proposed area is in conformance with the City of Bend's comprehensive plan and has recommended adoption by city council. A little bit of background about what tax increment finance is. What it does is it uses property taxes in a specified area to fund identified projects that address community needs and blight within that specific area. What it is not, it is not a property tax increase on the property owner or anyone in the city limits of Bend, and it does not reduce existing revenue to taxing districts. TIF can only be used in a blighted area. And while I understand that oftentimes blight has various connotations within the public, it is defined in state law. It has 14 key criteria under Oregon Revised Statute 457, but broadly speaking, is areas that are determined, excuse me, areas that are detrimental to safety, health, and welfare of the community because one or more of the following conditions. Either it has unsafe buildings or structures, economic disuse of the property from faulty planning, lots of irregular shape and size, inadequate streets or utilities, and lack of proper utilization of areas resulting in stagnant and unproductive land. Usually, this is not developed as zone or consistent with surrounding areas. Visual examples of blight can include, as per the previous slide, inadequate streets and stagnant or unproductive land. These are two particular photos from the emblem site-specific area. We do know that community need, rent is affordable when it is less than 30% of someone's income or a household income. Last year, during the policy justification for the site-specific salaries for eight out of 10 occupations do not meet this test, which 50% of our households could not afford if they had to rent today. Later this afternoon, you'll be notified that the new State of the Housing Report has been released, which will have updated numbers, but the community need is still the same. Bend will need an additional 33,000 housing units targeted for affordability among various income ranges over the next 20 years, per the Oregon Housing Needs Assessment. As always, as we've seen in the market, interest rates and economic uncertainty are stressing the multi-unit sector in order to provide naturally occurring affordability, and the community still needs units to be constructed to meet this need and also the future need of future residents. What this particular program does is it focused on historically vacant land for implementation of five years or more. The Vura policy to support is a minimum of 15% of units have to be rented to households earning 90% area median income or less, at rents no more than the 30% of household income, and annual rent increases for those rent-restricted units are lower than the statutory maximums. The extended rebate is available if the development provides additional affordable units, provides minimum 25% of local contractors, or offers an energy certification, or one or more of the following. In the employment side, which we haven't had a policy, but just a caveat with that, certain sectors of our target-sector industries must maintain or create a minimum of five new jobs with an average salary of $72,000. The development assistance is in the form of a rebate of increased property taxes paid by the assisted development and/or the use of payment for the city portions of system development charges. As I noted earlier, it does not use taxes of any other property, and it does not raise any property owner's tax. There is a process for establishing a TIF plan. So on July 16, Vura considered and recommended the Emblem TIF Plan. It went to the Planning Commission for Comp Plan Conformance. We notified the taxing districts, which are 11, 11 of them. The county declined a presentation, and a public notice was sent out on September 1. Tonight is one of two meetings that the city council will consider the Emblem Plan. Tonight on October 1 is the public hearing, and the second reading may occur or could occur on October 15. The proposed recommended TIF plan and report are broken into two aspects. The Tax Increment Finance Plan identifies the projects to be funded, a map and a legal description, relationship to local objectives and land uses, and a maximum indebtedness. There is no debt being issued under this form of TIF plan, but that is the common colloquial term for what the funds are. The Tax Increment Finance Plan Report identifies the existing conditions in the TIF area. It provides reasons for selecting this area. It provides a blight remediation plan, which is often associated with the projects to be funded. It provides an estimated cost of those projects, an anticipated date of the project completion, a financial analysis, and a financial impact. The TIF Plan and the TIF Report have to provide relationships to state and local objectives. These are the summaries of what those two documents provide, that it provides needed housing units identified in the OHNA. It supports Chapter 11, Chapter 5, and Chapter 1. So Chapter 1 is public involvement. Goal 5 is housing, and Goal 11 is growth management. Under the growth management, it makes efficient use of large blocks of land, supports mixed-income housing, and supports the Southeast Area Plan Goals to add a mix of residential units and transportation network. It also supports the Bend Economic Development Advisory Board Strategic Plan, which supports Goal 2, supporting workforce housing opportunities. And the project conforms to the Bend Development Code. Here is a summary of the Comp Plan and the Development Code of the Southeast area. The proposed area is the yellow star. It is an expansion area development. It is located near parks, schools, and commercial lands. It implements the Southeast Area Plan with comprehensive plan policies by supporting a mix of residential uses, types, and densities, and also between existing and new neighborhoods. In addition, with the on- and off-site improvements of transportation development, it supports the build-out of the overall area's transportation network. There are statutory limitations, both by acreage and assessed value. Per the statute, TIF areas, which is the entire core area, Murphy's Crossing, Jennifer Ridge, the previous site-specific plans, or any future urban renewal plans, they must be less at or below 15% of total acreage and 15% total assessed value. If this plan is adopted and goes into effect, Bend will have 7.8%, 7.80% acreage, and 3.38% of total assessed in those areas. So we're far below the statutory minimum. There has been conversation about the overall impact of Vura in terms of its activity since 2005. So the historical taxable assessed value and the diverted taxable increment value, Vura has had less than 1% impact on Borough has had less than 1% impact on diverting total new incremental assessed value since 2005, with the little sliver of yellow that is Borough's impact, and that's Core Area, Juniper Ridge, and Murphy's Crossing, and also including the last 10 years of the downtown urban renewal area. Just to recap of the proposed location and the proposed project, it is near High Desert Middle School and along Ferguson Road near Knott Road. The Emblem TIF area's overview, it's 8.38 acres. The current assessed value for the properties is $101,000. It is zone medium and high-density residential. The identified blighted conditions in the TIF plan and report are inadequate infrastructure and stagnant and unproductive land. The plan maximum indebtedness is 22.1 million. The plan term is 26 years. And the projects identified for funding are development assistance for the specified project and plan administration. The proposed projects are broken down as such, 97% of 22.1 million, which equals 21.4 million for development assistance, and $663,000 for plan administration. The financial impacts are to the City of Bend, it's about $128 for your general fund impact, $918 for the average annual impact to our taxing districts. This is based on the forgone revenue of the frozen base. Bonds and levies will receive $3.9 million, and that goes to schools, parks, and fire. And in addition, this will spur development that has long been delayed in the area, which will generate $4.7 million for system development revenue, with $2 million of that going to the parks' system development charges. The project is $85 million. The blighted conditions are 10-year vacant lot. There is a total of 264 units with the average market rate rent of $2,333. The anticipated date of certificate occupancy at this time is 2026. They have applied and were granted through Borough's adoption of an extended rebate. They have went above and beyond the 15% minimum requirement and are providing 20% of units, which will equal 53 at 70% through 90% for 24 years. They have also applied for the enhanced affordability, which is the expanded option, the 45% of local contractors, and a green energy certification. The breakdown of the total bedrooms is 112 for one bedroom, 128 for two bedrooms, and 24 for three bedrooms. The rent restricted units are below with 13 units for 70% area median income, 13 units for 80% area median income, and 27 units for 90% area median income. There were submitted taxing district comments from Ben Parks and Rec. The first comment was the concern that the reliant of lack of infrastructure and undeveloped lot condition as blighted conditions is too broad and could be applied to any urban growth boundary expansion. Staff recommendation is no changes because this complies with the general statute as such, and our city attorney can speak to that a little bit more, but we say that if you do provide or at least consider staff recommendation, you can also consider this with the policy updates that you can recommend to the home committee. The second BPRD comment was they would like the TIF plan to be included in the consideration of BPRD adopted plans. Staff recommendation is no changes at this time. BPRD and other plans were considered and addressed in the larger Southeast Area Plan Project, which is the development assistance per the TIF plan is in conformance with those plans. It's implemented through the Bend Comp Plan and site review for the project, which were already addressed in the TIF plan.
I don't have anything to add unless you have questions.
Yeah, why don't you expand on that point bullet there if you want.
The second bullet, the first bullet?
The one that Jonathan said the city attorney's office could explain a little bit more.
Yeah, so the statute, as Jonathan laid out in one of his earlier slides, has a long list of what is counted as blight or can be counted as blight under statute. And this parcel in this area comply with the list of blighted conditions. And the policy adopted by, to set up this program doesn't restrict assistance to a subset of those blighted conditions, but that's what Jonathan is referring to, policy updates could consider. Are we only interested in supporting areas or developments that are meeting a subset of those blighted conditions under the statute? But it does comply with the blighted conditions under the statute, as our recommendation.
So UGB area, expansion areas, greenfield, it's never been developed before, so, but you can still call that blight?
Greenfield can meet the definition of blight under the statute, yeah.
And that's legally defensible, like there's precedent for that?
Yeah, it's happened across the state as well, so it's not unique to us. And as Jonathan pointed out, it has been raised before and has been raised as a criticism, and it's allowed under the statute and is something that council and Borough could consider with the policy updates that you have coming before you in the coming months.
And what is, I don't understand the second concern of BPRD that would like the TIF plan to include consideration of BPRD adopted plans and the staff response. This might be Jonathan's question, I don't know.
We could parlay off that one. So in one of the requirements of adopting a, or at least for Borough to consider a TIF plan, this is different from the public hearing requirements under the ORS 457, but in a TIF plan development, it says, consider local objectives, adopted plans, and goals and policies. Normally that just applies to our comp plan and our economic development strategy because it's a city function and is a city agency and goal and objective. They're requesting that in the coming months, or at least, I don't know when they're suggesting us to do it, but they would like you to consider in addition to our local objectives and adopted plans, other taxing districts' adopted plans. But in the staff recommendation, because this is part of the larger Southeast Area Master Plan, it is in conformance with those adopted plans because it has to meet the overall development requirements of the area.
The mayor wanted to jump in.
Sure, yeah, I actually have the same question about precedent, and it sounds like it's been answered that this statute has been challenged before and upheld, it sounds like at Luba, am I correct?
Yes, yeah, there have been challenges to different determinations of blight, and the statute has not been changed.
And then on the second point, I was just reviewing the letter, and the request was to literally address their comprehensive plan that the district has, you know, independently put in place. That was the request, and so that, just to clarify that. And I think that's, as Jonathan pointed, outside of what we've already kind of decided here as far as the policy.
So the statute that they cited is a requirement of what belongs in an urban renewal plan, what must be in an urban renewal plan. And I can read the section for you. It's an explanation of the plan's relationship to definite local objectives regarding appropriate land uses and approved traffic, public transportation, public utilities, telecommunications utilities, recreational and community facilities, and other public improvements. And the Southeast Area Plan as a whole addressed all of those items and in its adoption, and as well as the Bend Comprehensive Plan addresses many of those elements as well. And so the recommendation from staff is that the description in the plan already about how the proposed project is in conformance with the Southeast Area Plan and the Bend Comprehensive Plan meets this requirement, and no changes are necessary.
We adopt master plan for this area also, right?
Yes.
It's not just this parcel, it's bigger than this parcel.
We adopted an area plan, the Southeast Area Plan is in the development code, and then there are Southeast Area policies in the comprehensive plan that that area plan implements.
It's not also the master plan for this big chunk of land that's bigger than this parcel, but it's, this parcel's a subset of it, I thought.
No, based off of the way the Southeast Area Plan was set up, master planning is not required because of what that Southeast Area Plan accomplished. So there's a certain set of policies in the Southeast Area Plan of how these projects will be developed and what problems may occur.
Oh, I mean, I'm remembering some sort of process where we reviewed something for this area.
Yeah, it was the Southeast Area Plan.
It's been more recent than that, okay.
Well, there wasn't, are you thinking about the other, the lot immediately adjacent to this one?
Yeah, there was an annexation that needed to occur to bring that in, that's, we had to bring that in, helpful for that, yeah.
Jonathan, I wanted to ask you about the, there's an estimate in here that says the 53 affordable units are expected to have a reduced rent average of $1,618 a month. I think it's notable that the, you know, granted, the program did not require anything other than one-bedroom units. So this meets that requirement. I do think it's unfortunate that there aren't more three-bedrooms units in this project, and that there are, out of 264 units, all 53 are one-bedroom units. So my question for you is, do you have an estimate for the difference between what the market rent average is and what the reduced rent average, expected rent is for those affordable units? In other words, if we wanted to know, how much money are we expected to be giving into a community benefit? Could we do that math? You know, if it was $200 a unit, we could, we could do that math, or what would that number look like?
So at the last meeting, I had all that information. Tonight was not, was not that night. I think we had estimated that, I'm not going to provide a number because I don't have the one right off the top.
That's okay. I think, um, yeah, but then.
We had that number at the last meeting, that we discussed this, I believe. Is that correct, Jonathan?
But in addition, they've also applied for local contractors, which is a little bit more expensive, green energy, which per the EPA's green thumb, when we went through the policy review on the first year, it was about 2% to 7% more on total development cost. We do have it broken down that we can send out at a later time, but staff, staff does recommend, at the time, the Borough adoption of the policy and plan.
Thank you.
So Jonathan, I, um, you wouldn't have been involved in this, though. I think the, isn't the property immediately to the west of the Emblem property under development currently? No?
To the, to the west, the light or the medium residential?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is under development, yes. Yeah, so I, I mean, I was not on council at that time, but I don't know, Council Riley, if this is what you were thinking of, but when that application came through, that was a land use application. And I seem to recall there was some discussion at that time about the amount of park space that would be included in that development plan, and there were some advocates, community advocates, that thought that amount of park space was reduced from what the Southeast Area Plan kind of called for. And I'm, I do wonder, you don't, you don't have a site plan for Emblem, do you? I don't see it in the.
No, because that's not, that's not part of the.
Yeah, I believe it is.
His plan.
Some early iterations of the plan that showed, to finish a little park site, they really, the larger park is located in the bottom right of the Southeast area. They were really trying to meet their open space requirement, which they met when they came back in. One plan had shown a park, like a private park in there before, but their, their main requirement was, per code, was meaning an open space requirement on that development, which they did in the revised.
The 10%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and this project meets the 10% open space requirement? So it's just open space, it's not park space?
It's, it's been approved for its site plan, I believe, so it meets what the applicable criteria for the development are. I don't know if this particular one has an open space requirement for it, but it's been approved, so it meets the criteria.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to understand, but maybe in the public comment, if the Parks Department is making public comment, then maybe we'll understand a little bit more what the concern is about the Parks Plan being taken into consideration here.
If I understand their request, they're asking us to incorporate their goals into the site-specific policy in the same way that we are incorporating our desire for more affordable housing units and job creation in the site.
And we're saying that we need that by the Southeast Area Plan.
Right.
Yes.
We need large factors, and they have the individual site criteria when they come in for site plan.
Turn it over to the mayor real quick.
Yeah, I was just going to add that my memory was, it was not, there was no BPRD park planned in this area, but there was that private park potentially in the RM, and then they changed it to meet the open space differently. And then just also to remind folks, this is RH zoned land, and we're looking at multifamily developments. It's a little bit different than the other things that have been going on in Southeast right now.
Yeah, I get, I mean, I get all of that. I think the difference between this and the RM property is that the RM is not a TIF district. It's a, it's just a street development. So it's, there's different laws that apply here.
If I may, Mayor Pro Tem, I do actually have that number. I do have my binder with me. So the total project cost is estimated to be 85 million. They have indicated that they're going to at least have 45% of local contractors. That will put 38.3 million into the local economy, which will generate an additional 72 million after the project is completed. The estimated household savings impact on the local economy is 13 million. But if the development does not occur, the estimated tax to generate over that site over the next 24 years is only $59,000. One thing that I do want to point out that we often overlook, but is an important point of the actual policy. Any project that gets an enhanced rebate, it has to produce a two-to-one return for our taxing districts over the same amount of time. If it did not produce a two-to-one return, we would not have approved it. So given the fact that we're only offering 24 years, over the next 24 years after that, it will generate a two-to-one return.
So if I could just follow up then on the household savings, because if we look, if we figure it's expected rent of 1,618 and 20% of the units are available at 70% to 90%, most of them are at the 90%, and so if we just said, well, that's probably around $300 a month difference, rough. Maybe it's 200, maybe a 400. If we do that math and we take $300 a month, we multiply that by 53 units, we multiply that by 12 months and 24 years, I get $4,579,200. But you said 13 million.
Over 24 years?
That's right.
With the standard rental increases every year that's allowed under state statute and/or the market, that's also including.
I see. So there's a, there's a divergence over time because the, the market rate goes higher than the, than they're allowed, okay, I get it.
And one of the key requirements under the, has to preserve rent. Under the state statute, it does not apply to new developments with five or more units. You've elected to apply the state statute for these particular ones in order to receive the rental entry, the rental restrictions. If new developments build in the City of Bend, they are not prohibited, they are allowed to raise their rents that are applicable under the state statute. So this is actually another level of trying to preserve affordability for those 20% of units.
So that 13 million is with the expected rent increases? And then I guess I would expect that to be in today's dollars and not inflation-adjusted dollars.
So yeah, everything today is in 2025, but it does include the 3% to 5% rental increases for those units per year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for Jonathan? And there's no, you're, you're it, right? The presentations?
I think.
You're the whole show.
The night.
You're the whole show, all right. Um, great, I guess we'll move on to public testimony. We have two signed up to speak on this topic. First is Karen Johnson. You're up. Yeah, come to the front here.
Karen Johnson, the Land Use Chair for the Old Farm District Neighborhood Association. And I'm speaking on behalf of the board. We support this project. It seems like a very clever way to get some more affordable housing. Hopefully it works. I'm not entirely familiar with the figures, but it seems like it should work out. Our problem, one objection, is the restricted units, as have already been pointed out, they're all one-bedroom, but some of these folks are going to have families, they're going to have kids, and they're going to need at least one more bedroom, ideally perhaps two more bedrooms. So we suggest that some of these units be designated for two-bedroom and for three-bedroom. You can get two or three kids in a bedroom, but they're going to need their own bedroom. So that's, that's our only comment. Please, thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least is Sharon Sampson.
I don't have a whole lot to say. Good evening, everyone, because everything just got covered. I really liked the mayor's idea of a round table so that we will know in that area, because I live in that area, what exactly is going on besides just a little flyer in the mail.
Sure.
Um, I don't understand how he can fathom that even at the $1,600 a month in, with 3% increases is going to be affordable housing. This does not sound like affordable housing to me. And we are looking at, almost like urban sprawl. You know, you're very concerned with affordable housing, but you're also not looking at the picture of what we are here in Bend as far as why you've moved here. as far as why you've moved here, not to have everything and not to have just every open lot be called a blight, which I find very, you know, every little piece of land doesn't need to be built on. That's all.
Just thank you, Sharon. All right, that is it for our public testimony unless anybody else is is there anyone on the line? All right, I will close the public hearing and you can deliberate or hear a motion.
I move for the first reading of the ordinance adopting the Emblem Tax Increment Finance Plan and establishing the tax the Emblem Tax Increment Finance area.
Second.
All right, still, I'd like to just say before we pass our votes. The reason why I will not be supporting this is, one, I I do disagree that the land is stagnant and unproductive, and I know that it may meet the legal definition of blight, but new construction has begun in that area. I I have doubts about whether this is really the right tool to get that project moving or whether it's really necessary. And secondly, I have questions about whether this is really the right tool. And I I acknowledge that when we first considered this this program, I believe it was about a year ago or more even, we may not have had the awareness to contemplate additional tools. I think that we're going to get those tools, and thanks in part to the Home Committee. But I I can't get over the twenty-two million one hundred and two thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollar benefit for what feels like an insufficient amount in return. And so I I feel like it's just it's too much for what should be a more a bigger benefit. So I'm gonna I'm not going to be supporting this one.
Um, the motion was moved by Council Riley, seconded by Council Norris. All those in favor?
Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Mayor, you had something to say?
Yeah, just just again, as a Southeast Bend person, I think it's really important to remember that we want investment and we want this type of housing available across the city. I also want to note that this is part of a Southeast area plan that's been in place for many years now. And other than sort of the master plan neighborhoods that big developers have put in, we haven't seen a lot of this multifamily come in, and the multifamily really serves an important purpose in our community. And yes, even the one-bedroom serve an important purpose in our community, providing different types of housing that are available to different types of families and and people that need housing and cannot afford to buy a single-family house in a master plan neighborhood built by Polish that some of us can. And so I also want to say that there is an aspect here of helping things move forward more quickly. That is a positive. You could say we don't think this is blighted, we'll wait for it to develop, and I would question, how long do we wait? Do we need three years or five years or ten years or how long do we wait for someone to take a risk and invest the money to create housing? That I also will point out is right next to a commercial corner in the Southeast area. And one of the things commercial corners need to develop, which will be a continuing conversation we're having with the community, is you need a lot of people living right nearby. As many people as you can have living nearby, and including dense housing can help commercial become viable, because those are customers that can return to those businesses that are very hard to maintain, especially groceries, which I've told folks before. But so for me, this is a really important project for the area. And I think it is an incredible investment for us to get the type of affordability that we're going to get and just the numbers of housing that are going to be appearing on this site. And I appreciate the comment about how we don't have to develop every little piece of land, but when we do develop land, we need to do it efficiently to meet our housing numbers, and this is a really important way to do that. So I'm very supportive of of this particular project. I agree, we continue to we can continue to refine this policy and we can change our policy goals with the site-specific TIP going forward. But it doesn't feel fair to say, well, I no longer like the policy that we set up, and so I don't think this project meets a policy that I want to implement in the future. We we made the policy, this project meets the policy, and I think it is a good investment for the area. So I just wanted to give my support.
Yeah.
Sure.
Uh, thank you for that, Mayor. I I do appreciate those comments, and I think that I actually, there's a lot to like about this project. They there was a new report recently released that showed that new apartments have fewer bedrooms and about six percent of apartments have three-bedroom or more. This one has nine percent of them have three bedrooms or more, so I I like that. I think that it is it is it's doing better than the national average in terms of supporting families. And and it's not necessarily the policy per se that I think I have an issue with or the project. It's it's twenty-six percent of the construction costs are are in the form of a direct subsidy, and that that just seems so, I I have a hard time getting over that. I think that's more generous than than any of our other tax increment finance projects. And and because of the magnitude of it, it's it's such a large amount. So I I'm I think that the project is is actually good. And I don't think that the program necessarily is is bad, but it's the magnitude for what I feel like we get in return. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, I just wanted to write, you know, I mean, it's already been said, but to remind all of us that we we've sort of taken the first pass at this, right, with a number of projects, we put it on hold, we're getting review. Home Committee is talking about it tomorrow. We're going to have the opportunity to also weigh in on what we think needs to be tweaked going forward, and some of the concerns that are being raised are the kinds of things we could talk about. So I think as Borough Chair, I will make a commitment to kind of reach out to everybody one-on-one and see what, you know, if there are three to five, three things that you think maybe we need to think about. Five might be too many, but three, three things you think we need to think about and see what kind of consensus there might be as we get into the discussion about that and watch how they line up or not with what we're hearing from home. But because, you know, we committed to this policy and give it a trial, I'm I'm comfortable moving forward with the ones that have come for before us, knowing that the whole point was to learn, pause, and reevaluate, and we're going to have a chance to do that shortly.
Any other comments before we vote?
No, I just appreciate the seventy percent, too. You know, you have the eighty to ninety percent and then going above and beyond and having that seventy, I know, is challenging to make a pencil project, so a project pencil. So thanks, Phil.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Right. Item number six.
This is the second reading of an ordinance amending Bend Municipal Code Title sixteen to update the city's requirements for post-construction site runoff control and compliance with the city's municipal separate stormwater stormwater sewer systems permit.
May I make a motion?
Yes, please.
I move for the second reading and adoption by roll call vote of the ordinance amending Bend Municipal Code Title sixteen to update the city's requirements for post-construction site runoff control and compliance with the city's municipal separate stormwater sewer system permit. Second. Council Prinsosa, let me get this one to Council. Um, although, oh, it's a roll call vote. Yes, sorry.
Council Prinsosa?
Yes.
Council Mendez?
Yes.
Council Riley?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Perkins?
Yes.
Council Norris?
Yes.
Council Platt?
Aye.
Mayor Keebler?
Yes.
All right, and under seven is our our B-team president's city managers' report.
Yes.
Grayson, the Honorable Russ Grayson.
So I've I've got a couple of just updates, so a couple of fun things. Fall Fest is this weekend, just a reminder, so there will be some closures downtown for that event. Also, this weekend on Saturday, October fourth, Intend to One at the North Fire Station is then Fire and Rescue Open House Event, where they're inviting the public to come and climb on the equipment and a lot of family-friendly activities going up there to to learn about all the things that the Fire Department does. Looking forward, November third, we have an open house at the Larkspur Community Center for the Red Market Overcrossing Project with community, so just marking that calendars. And then also, just so councils aware, we're starting to see the Neighborhood District Annual Meetings start to appear, and staff's going to several of these to provide presentations and be there to be able to answer questions. If you have any questions about what where they are or what's going on, you can reach out to myself or Renee, and we can get you connected. But staff is planning to attend those. Another just quick update, there's some new economic development reports that you can view on our Economic Development webpage, including a housing report, a state of the economy report, and target sectors report. And it's just got put on, so if you have, you can see that if you have any questions, you can reach out to Jonathan or Katie Brooks. Also, just so you know, we have the upcoming work session next week on the transportation funding priorities. In the material that we're going to be writing, just so you know, there's going to be a memo in there that is a joint memo between our between Ryan and our engineering group and our transportation group on just the status of where we are with all the transportation system plan programs and projects. So if you've been through the what we call the TSP, there's a list of near, mid, and long-term projects as well as programs. This is going to give you an update on where we where we are, and it's actually, I would say, quite impressive of what what we've done to date and and everything we've got on the ground and and what's what's in the pipeline. We will also have a a joint letter from that T-Boc and CAB meeting on their recommendation that will be in the packet, as well as the current capital improvement program plans for you to look at for those projects, because we'll be talking about a couple of those things when we move through that. Some other kind of, this is this is a good good news program. So in Water Services, we have the Low Income Assistance Program with their utility billing. There's a new program that was launched in October of twenty twenty-three, and it's open to all low-income households. We also use that as a basis for the transportation fee reduction as well. It's administered in partnership with Neighbor Impact. Enrollment has increased significantly since we started that program. So before that, and if you look back two years before in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, we had about one hundred and fifty to two hundred households that benefited from the old program. We gave out about sixty to seventy thousand dollars per year in assistance. In twenty twenty-four, we had over four hundred households take advantage of that program and administered just around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of assistance. And we are on track to exceed both of those numbers in the calendar year of twenty twenty-five. As part of that, shut-offs have also decreased dramatically. Twenty twenty-three, we had four hundred and fifteen shut-offs. Twenty twenty-four, we had two hundred and thirty-one, and we're looking at less this year. So that 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 there's benefits of those programs in terms of not only helping people maintain their bills, but also making sure that we don't have to shut water off, as it is, as everyone knows, a very critical part of everyday life. And the last exciting news is around the Public Works Campus up in Juniper Ridge. So we are starting to move staff into that facility next week.
Yeah.
Um, we're moving our our facility folks and our IT folks up there. And then our Transportation Mobility Group and Engineering Group move up in mid-October. The main reason for that is not only want to get people in the facility, but we also want to make sure David and his team are set up for winter operations. Because as you get towards the the end of October, snow could start flying at any time. And as one who just bought my ski pass. And then moves will continue through November with Water Services and Fleet moving up there in November. I just toured the site, went up there and took a look today. It's a very impressive facility. It is really nice to see a facility that is built for its intended purpose. We've been to our current facilities, so you can see how we've kind of kind of used duct tape and billing wire to make sure they work well, but it's very exciting. We'll have events up there. We're planning to get to council up there after the first of the year. We're going to let the teams kind of get adjusted in there in that new facility, but definitely looking to use that not only just for that, but also for other public meetings and things like that. And that's it.
Thanks, Wes.
Two questions. One, what's the time for the November third of news?
The time
Red Market one?
Yeah.
The Red Market one is from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Larkspur Community Center.
And then are you able to give us a summary of what T-Boc and CAB? Basic record?
Yeah.
Some of us kind of heard about this the other day, but I think
Yeah, at a at a high level, they are, one, when we had conversations with them, we we said you can have individual letters because you both represent different kind of, you've been been charged with different tasks by city council, so we want to make sure that you're looking through the appropriate lens of each of your committees. Through those discussions, they're actually going to, they they both came to the same conclusion, so they'll be be providing a joint letter from both committees on that, which basically highlights they agree with you on kind of continuing to monitor Greenwood and leave it in its current state, continue the design of that that ODOT Arts Program to look at the Second Street Crossing, knowing that we can come back and have later conversations on cost and timing around that and whether or not we want to pursue that. They agreed to move forward with the additional transportation planning dollars around the Hawthorne Bridge to get that, to look at those, what what else needs to happen around there, and then have that conversation next year when we get the results of that and we know what the cost of the bridges, the bridge is at in terms of what additional work we may want to do there. And both groups really landed on stay the course on Franklin. They're basically going to recommend build it, build it as design, including the uphill bike lanes on both sides of the underpass. So that will be, I believe what the recommendation is going to be there. There's versions of that letter going back and forth right now, but you should be getting that soon. So it was a very, I would say it was a very good discussion. And I think both groups representing their their committees very well in that discussion. Yep.
On that note, I will adjourn the city council meeting and pass the gavel to
My first act was going to be to say, let's take it very shortly.
Yes, you can do that.
Be back here somewhere around seven thirty-seven, actually. Be back here somewhere around seven thirty-seven, I should say. Okay, we're going to call the order of this meeting of the Bend Urban Renewal Agency for October first, two thousand twenty-five. Do we need to do a call for this meeting?
Why don't you do it and we'll find out.
Okay, come start with you, Councilor.
Megan Norris, she her.
Megan Perkins, she her.
Exactly. Ariel Mendez, he him.
Dina Franzosa, she her.
He's the mayor. Can you say that again? Melanie, we couldn't hear.
Uh oh.
And we still don't have sound at our end. Yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Okay.
Okay, well, no, you're here, but you nodded and.
Oh, ask Juan to help us with that. This is the public hearing and adoption of a resolution establishing program fees for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six.
Going to open the public hearings. And remember Johnson.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission. There is no presentation because this is a simple fee resolution. In August, you passed the Affordable Housing Loan Policy through the Bend Urban Renewal Agency. This is only applying the one percent origination fee to those loan application documents. The one percent loan, the one percent origination fee is to going to finance, to help process those loans, and also to set up the loan documents. If we have an application.
Do we have any questions for staff? So it's just the one percent. That's the only thing that changes here?
Yes.
Yeah, that wasn't that totally clear on the document itself in terms of like. Sure, same question. That's the only change is the decision for that. Okay. Anything else from Castle? No? Is there any public comment? In person or online? Nobody in line? Okay, not close public hearing. Any further discussion in the council or?
I'd move to adopt the resolution, updating the fees for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six as presented.
Second.
Moved by Member Perkins in second, which is the number Norris. All those in favor?
I am.
Hi. Anybody opposed? Okay. Assets.
Borough is asked to adopt a resolution rescinding the Core Area Business Assistance Program, establishing the Core Area Revitalization Effort Grant Program and authorizing the Core Area Board to make grant award decisions.
Take the weight down.
Good evening, Chair. Tonight, staff is presenting the the Core Area Revitalization Effort Program, or more euphemismally, Care for Our Core. A little bit of background about where we have been and where we are going. On April fifth of twenty twenty-three, the Bend Urban Renewal Agency adopted the Core Area Business Assistance Program. It was a program that provided matching grants for eligible projects inside the core area. Some of those eligible projects can include both internal and external improvements. And it also provided two pathways for assistance, design assistance and construction assistance. If the applicant chose construction assistance, most of the projects had to have a lifespan of ten years or more, which is kind of the standard for transient lodging tax and urban renewal projects. Borough approved nine ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars during the two twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four funding cycle for six businesses. On June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, Cab reviewed the existing program to determine its overall effectiveness. What they found is that eighty-three percent of the funding went to internal improvements. And through that policy update and conversation, Cab recommended that the program, this program should focus on external improvements to aid in the improving the visualization of the area. The proposed update, there is a specific purpose regarding the program. It's to improve, expand, or attract new customers or pedestrian-facing traffic within the core area. It does maintain the matching grant program as was under the Core Area Business Assistance Program. It changed the award methodology, so it's just a simple fifty percent matching grant with an award up to fifty thousand dollars, which means a project could be a hundred thousand dollars and the project could be eligible for a fifty thousand dollar grant. Twenty-five percent of that fifty percent match can be used for design assistance. This can only be applied to capital upgrades or improvements to an existing building facade or some sort of customer-facing exterior. Cab wanted a rolling application process just to keep the word on the street so if a business was ready to apply at any time, they didn't have to wait another quarter or another year. We are proposing an innovative approach. It authorizes Cab to administer on behalf of Borough, which is allowed under the Bend Municipal Code. And I'll, but.
Would you like me to speak to that now?
Sure, that's great.
Sure. So the code provision the commenter was reading from is from one point two zero 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 five subsection V. And the sentence he read is in there, the prior sentence and the sentence that starts this section says, unless explicitly authorized by other formal action of the city council. And we apply this section also to the actions of Borough. So with the adoption of this policy by resolution, that will be the formal action of Borough that the code does allow you to take to delegate that authority. I'll also say it's not, this would not be the first time a subcommittee has delegated a similar authority. A HAC, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, was delegated the authority to make binding decisions on system development, charge exemptions for affordable housing. So this, while not exactly the same, it's a similar delegation that has been done in the past.
And it's within the adopted budget limits for your right to specific about that.
That's right. The only funds that Cab will have available to award would be within the adopted budget. And as well, I'll also point out that the awards up to fifty thousand dollars are within the city manager's authority to spend without the approval of Borough or city council, so long as those are also in the budget. So we think this is in alignment with existing procurement authority as well, but is authorized under the code, provided you take the formal action tonight.
Yeah. So I mean, I appreciate the commenter's attention to oversight and accountability, but I think for the reasons you said, it seems like this is solid way to move forward. And I think, you know, part of the discussion in Cab was that really just wanting to for them to have a little bit more engagement, like, you know, have a way to keep this rolling and not be dependent on council for something that is that got very clear borders from the budget perspective.
I'll I'll also say a comment, I believe, from the same gentleman came in about conflicts and potential and actual conflicts. So with the adoption of this and delegation of the authority to Cab, typically all of our bodies just have potential conflicts, if they have any at all, because they are making recommendations. On this matter, this could involve actual conflicts. So the actual conflicts rule from state law will apply. The policy addresses this. And both with this and the prior program that's being rescinded tonight, Cab went one step further that I think is the minimum requirements of state law and said both if the cab member or their family or business they're associated with is an applicant or if you're adjacent to an applicant, you're recused and not not able to participate in the decision-making process. So that's in the policy. And if there's nothing we could do to exempt anyone from the actual conflicts rules of the state, they would apply whether the policy said it or not. But we want it to be clear they do apply.
So physically adjacent with the bill?
That's yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, I guess the, I mean, I think I'm comfortable with it because of the fifty thousand dollar cap. But I guess I'll ask, is that the reason why we wouldn't just say make a recommendation in the same way that the Affordable Housing Advisor Committee does, and then Borough would in this case approve of it, but we would have it would be, you know, the Borough's final discretion or prerogative to make changes if it wanted to. Well, A HAC is delegated for S T C exemptions without having to.
Yeah.
But I mean, in their grant-making capacity, they make recommendations that council then approves of. And I mean, I think that works. The amounts are higher, more than fifty thousand. And so it's, you know, there's maybe there's a reason to say fifty thousand dollars is within, it's, you know, it's similar, it's the same level that the city manager is is already capable of acting unilaterally on and without council consent. So but is there a reason why you wouldn't want to say, make the recommendation that this body would then approve of? Is it you just feel like it's? Well, I mean, this this policy proposal is coming with a lot of input from Borough, from Cab, excuse me. And I think they would like to just make sure that we can keep these things really rolling on the legal basis. And I think we'd have a group of people who's very focused on the core area and looking out for the best interests of it. And I'm comfortable just given the sideboards we have on the amount of money here. I think some of those other work we're talking about, bigger numbers generally, that are recommendations from A HAC. I believe that's correct.
Yeah. And I'll just I'll just clarify the city manager's spending authority under the procurement code is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So this is limited to fifty thousand dollar grants.
Thank you. So I think it's real, you know, partly just to keep, just really kind of keep it rolling. And other people can pick and assist. We also have a a person of one over here who's doing a lot, right? And so at some point, it kind of just reduces the overall workflow and you can kind of keep these proposals moving forward.
I feel comfortable with this, and I trust in their judgment. And these are people that on on Cab that have real experience in this area are deeply ingrained in in the core area and want it to succeed. And so I I'm I'm fine with this. I think it's it's actually a really good idea.
I mean, we get asked to come back and report to us after the first year or so and say, how many projects was involved? Were there conflicts? What were the, you know, what did we get out of? Well, I guess what I'm worried about is not necessarily this current body, but in the future, thinking about if if the views of of the members of this body diverge from Borough, this, you know, there would be an awkward position for this body to say, well, it's our prerogative to spend this money however we want. You don't get to say it. Now, granted, it's only fifty thousand dollars per project. But having seen this happen in Portland, where the the views of an urban renewal agency were pretty divergent from the views of of the city council, it seems like this is a step down that direction. And so I feel like I would be more comfortable to saying, give us the recommendation. We can look at it and make sure that, you know, we're doing our due diligence and then say, okay, I don't see that. We don't, you know, it's, I don't see it as that burdensome, and I don't see it as slowing things down necessarily. It's, you know, a matter of a couple of weeks or something. But, you know, I I don't think it's unreasonable either way. So. So I think I I see support amongst everybody in the room. Sounds you have some concerns and assuming that it's support from the mayor as well. We have a couple of options. We can just take a straight-up vote, or you can try to amend, you could propose to amend this a little bit. I would just.
I'm a question for Jonathan, in case this is helpful. With the other grant program, were there any applicants that were denied the grant? And so I mean, how in demand is the program?
Well, now that.
Because it's basically contentious, you know, if it's like really like competitive, I guess, is the word, then, you know, maybe there that would be a really good argument for.
Ordinary Business Assistance Program coming on back online, now expressed to those business owners as well as cab members that are out there meeting with businesses, getting to know the area that I can't for, like, I can't forecast that it won't be competitive. As a staff person representing Borough and Urban Renewal Agency, I hope it is competitive. That would generate a lot of interest. But in terms of staff capacity and also what Cab has been talking about during their investment strategy, it is hard to get on the schedule of city council slash Borough to do minor awards. You do have a lot coming before you over the next year. And this was just an attempt not only to kind of empower one of your advisory boards, but also to free up some of the 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 minor investments. We're not proposing at this time to not bring back major site development assistance or loans or anything like that, not to this body. But this is just general grant awards, just to improve the visualization of the area. We did, oh, I did. And so I think, Elizabeth, you can always request a full report at the end of every year on money spent. It is budgeted in your adopted biennial budget for two hundred thousand dollars for this particular grant award. So I'm telling Cab a hundred thousand dollars this year, a hundred thousand dollars this year. Don't spend all the kitty in one year. But you can always ask for that, or you can make policy recommendations or changes on the dais.
Mayor Keebler, if you.
Yeah, let me just make sure my mic is working now. Okay. Yeah, I'm I am comfortable with it as as proposed here. And one of the things Jonathan already said, but there there is a there is a barrier on getting front of Borough Board again. And with these amounts of money and with these sideboards, I'm comfortable having the the cab make the decisions. I think we could also give direction after the first hundred thousand goes out that we receive a report. And I I don't think that would be hard for us to do, even if it's at a meeting or not, but that we just get a rundown of what went out. And were there any conflicts? And then that could make, if there is a need to change the policy, we would see it at that point. But I think I'd be comfortable with moving forward right now.
I would suggest the same thing. We can just put that, I guess, in our minutes and convey it to Cab. And after the first hundred thousand dollars, we'd like some kind of summary report on on what the projects were and what the out, you know, the projected outcomes are going to be if they're not complete yet. And if there were any conflicts. And there's no sunset provision here, but I guess the mechanism would be through the 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 biennial budget to fund the program. So if, for example, we lost confidence in their program, you know.
Just zero it out or something like that. You have control through the budget process, and then you can also amend the policy anytime.
Okay, I move to adopt the resolution.
It has more presentation or?
No, I was just going to kind of give you an idea of what you did approve last year. You approved eighteen thousand dollars for Dogwood, which is part of that whole Second Street revitalization, which obviously this is what it looks like today, which we we thank Borough for investing in Second Street. And then in addition, because we also know that a childcare is important to the city council, Borough or Cab recommended seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for Timber Kitty's Preschool, thirteen thousand dollars for Growing Tree Children's Center, and then we provided Colima Market, twenty-four thousand. Marcos with Daisy Property Management, seventeen thousand dollars. Open Space Studios did apply and received eighteen thousand, but they have some site plans, some project changes. They rescinded their application, so they're eighteen thousand dollars. They go out. So it was a wide variety. One concern that has been expressed is what about the internal improvements moving forward? Because a lot of those buildings in the core area need some internal improvements. That is a part of Cab's work plan that you've charged them with for next year's quarter one. Is what are other incentives can you provide to help prevent displacement, revitalization, not only of the exterior, but making the interior worthy of being in business and being up to code? So that's part of their broader work plan, but this is just kind of that visualization, rev and cut, making the area feel good.
Yeah, we're not essentially losing, potentially we're not losing that business assistance piece that's just going to come up next.
Correct. And that'll be a part of the investment investment strategy on December third, but we can give you a preview on October fifteenth.
Move through the resolution rescinding the Core Area Business Assistance Program, establishing the Core Area Revitalization Effort Grant Program, authorizing the Core Area Advisory Board to make grant award decisions. Authorizing the Core Area Advisory Board to make grant award decisions. And authorizing the city manager and staff to implement the program without further Bura action. Including signing grant agreements and related documents.
Second.
From move by number Mendez and then second is by number Matt. All is in favor? Anybody posed?
Stay up here for me.
We're going to suss through the Juniper Ridge Development Assistance Agreement with Taylor Brooks for the project NOCO located at Cooley Road and Eighteenth Street.
So other than Matt, who's been all about Juniper Ridge, I want to provide a little bit of background of the Juniper Ridge Urban Renewal. Uh, strategy and plan, uh, because we haven't done a lot of their through Urban Renewal this year or last year. Uh, it was established in two thousand and five. It has a thirty year plan horizon. The current maximum indebtedness is forty one million, five hundred thousand dollars. The goals of the area is to support development of high quality employment within the area. That includes, uh, commercial, light industrial, mixed use development, as well as housing, which will bring back a. Potential minor amendment in the future. Preserve and enhance the area's natural assets, improve traffic and transportation and provide public utilities. Some of the major projects that Borough has funded was Cooley and Talis extensions all the way across the urban renewal area. A hundred thousand dollars in development assistance under this actual program approved in two thousand twenty three. And approximately three million dollars to ODOT improvements on US ninety seven interchange. A little bit about about the background of Juniper Ridge Development Assistance. It was adopted on August thirty first, twenty twenty by Borough. It provides annual reimbursements up to seventy five percent of the property tax generated on the new projects within the area. But it also has a cap of ten percent of the total development project. The program supports eligible eligible activities associated with commercial and industrial projects, including construction, property acquisition. And site preparation and improvements. This policy is intended to advance and support the planned areas' goals. And like I said just a slide ago, the program has awarded a hundred thousand dollars to two businesses in twenty twenty three. A little bit about the project. If you do have questions, the applicant is here tonight. This is where the area is. It's along Cooley and Talis Road. It is by Taylor Brooks, twenty nine point one million dollars for the total project cost. It is in in Employment Sub District of the Juniper Ridge Overlay. It's an eight acre site, more commonly known as Lot Six. It is a phased development of a six building campus that will provide light, industrial and commercial spaces. They are improving Northeast Andes Site and Northeast Triton Place. Uh, the proposed end users are expected to be in the advanced manufacturing and pharmaceutical distribution, uh, industries. And the project employment is expected to add about three hundred to five hundred jobs. How does this relate to the furthering development of Juniper Ridge? As you see, um, there is a phased land sale and development of Juniper Ridge. It will assist with the continued improvement of the area's transportation system. It continues to utilize large tract land of existing greenfields. The construction of Andes Site and Triton will expand access to additional parcels for the affordable housing and employment. And it will assist with the rebranding of the area for future development. In the Recommended Development Assistance Agreement, the terms of the agreement are for the developer to complete the project as phased project within five years. Submit final invoices to certify total development cost. They must pay property taxes annually and on time. Borough will award four point three million in a total rebate. Of that four point three million, they will only receive seventy five percent of those taxes annually. And no assistance will be provided if the project is completed with within five years.
Do we have any questions for Stan? Jonathan, could you share a little bit more specifically about what the four million, three hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy seven? Supports in terms of onsite and offsite improvements?
Yes, so it will be a reimbursement for the construction of the full Andes Site. Because they were only, they would have only been required to do three fourths of the road. They have completed the entire road of the project. Which opens up the adjacent parcel on the other side for potential SB eight affordable housing, so it'll lower the cost for that. In addition, it's the.
Road, just to be clear, is from the edge of the sidewalk.
It's the north south route, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but. It's a lot of times we got like one side.
Both sides of the road.
Yep, both sides of the road.
Matt has something to add.
Yeah, I'll let Matt, this is, this area is.
Good evening, Borough, Master at Real Estate Estates. Uh, under this, they built curb to curb asphalt sidewalk on one side and actually a low stress network on the west side. That essentially will be built up Andes Side all the way to the park eventually as that road continues to grow.
And Matt, while you're up here, could you describe, um, what potential restrictions on building this area? That might prevent us from getting the best and highest use, you know, in terms of density, for example?
Yeah, so this area has CCNRs, Juniper CCNRs, which has height limitations in it. As we're granted a Les Schwab, and we encouraged Les Schwab to develop in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. So there are height restrictions on this property that limit the general building height, I think it is about thirty five feet. So they really can't go above thirty five feet, uh, pretty much for this entire portion here west of Les Schwab. So that inhibits the buildings, building to kind of maximize the site, so they really have kind of maximize that they can with the property.
And how extensive of an area do those CCNRs apply to?
Extend pretty much everything west of Les Schwab, so the area where the star is, the lot just to the north. And if you just take that green line where those lots are, go all the way to through the purple.
And does it also include the affordable housing?
It will.
Lots, okay.
It'll be, the highest point will be up about thirty six feet.
So if it, if if the, if that restriction wasn't there, we could, we could conceivably fit more affordable housing in. We could probably reserve more open space and still achieve the same number of homes.
Correct. The height limit for the employment, so you have, is either fifty or sixty feet. IL, I believe, is fifty feet. And it can go up higher of sixty depending on your setbacks.
We would default back to the standard setbacks in the code, but this wasn't, as Matt mentioned, when that Les Schwab headquarters went in. This was one of the things as part of that land sale of that was, it was basically protecting view corridors to the mountains, to the west on those adjacent properties. And it was just a decision made at that time with the sale of that property.
Correct.
And I understand that it would be difficult, to say the least, to change those CCNR restrictions.
Yes, they're a entitlement recorded with the property and Les Schwab has specific language within those CCNRs. That gives them the final say on whether that that height limitation is removed or not, so we would have to negotiate directly with them. But right as a property owner.
And being in discussions with none of this property, but adjacent properties, Les Schwab is very interested in maintaining that. I don't think they want to give, give up that very easily. In our previous discussions.
Thank you, Matt.
Where's Les Schwab again?
They are, uh, right next to the. East corner, there we go.
They were, they were the first of all, but that occurred in Juniper Ridge.
Yep.
Um, did other folks have questions? Um, I have one. Can we talk a little bit about the prevailing wage? So in reviewing the policy today, I would get a little concerned about the prevailing wage languages in the policy. But I think I understand it, but just so that everybody in the room does.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, and we have actually had this question of the policy before, so we understand. The confusion that has arisen. So the policy says, um, the the language means if your project is subject to prevailing wage. Under the prevailing wage laws of Oregon, you have to comply and pay prevailing wage. It's not, um, an independent application of prevailing wage to projects, all projects funded under this policy. Um, we do have bolis issued at least one opinion that includes, um, the language that a tax rebate would not trigger prevailing wage. So we don't believe it's applicable, uh, to this project. It's, uh, the responsibility of the developer to comply with the prevailing wage laws. If independently of this policy, those rules apply.
Well, we have the opportunity to do anything about addressing how hard it is to cross Cooley Road.
Yeah, I mean, we are, it's kind of, that would go into the, kind of the bucket of everything going on in the city. That's one of the things, and if there's interest in that, that's one of the things we can look at, future. Projects within the Urban Renewal District of that is of interest to council. It is a double lane roundabout out there, so it does have those kind of. Concerns that have been brought up before around pedestrian crossings at that. Um, but if there's interest in that, Matt, I don't know if you're, we could, we could look at that because there is, there is potential funding up there to make improvement.
Is the road itself more than a three lane road with a middle turn lane or?
No, it's a three lane.
Liding with a median, and when the median's not there, there is a turn lane usually.
Widens to four lanes for the roundabout, so.
It's just, it's just a double lane roundabout. It's two lane entries on all four legs, um, you know, double in the middle.
We, as part of the low stress network, we are trying to make connections. So on the very south property where the light blue property is, if you continue all the way, we are, as we go through the UGB process, we have a piece of property there. That's actually technically not in city limits. That's ideally where we'd like to put the low stress network to make that connection, to eventually get all the way to the canal. That would actually go continue west in between the school site, because I, I don't even want to try to point, because I can't do it, but right back here. And then ideally, we would create a new crossing that would tie into the low stress network that goes up to North Point Park, which is up here. So I think as we continue to develop and build out that low stress network, I think we'll see improved crossings on Eighteenth and Cooley in this section to have. Uh, much less interrupted crossings for those folks that try to make that loop and connection.
And with a lot of areas we'll continue to monitor, I mean, the good thing is Juniper Ridge has seen a lot of development now, which is a very positive sign. It has, it has sat for a while, so as these issues come up, um, we're more than willing to continue to have conversations and work through the issues.
Is there, is there an opportunity for us tonight to use any of this money for traffic calming? I've heard people, I've overheard people boast that they've driven on, uh, northeast Eighteenth Street and hit eighty miles an hour. And they they use it as a drag racing strip and it's, it feels like that's what it should be. When, when you look at how long and straight it is, but.
I think this is outside the bounds.
So this would be outside the bounds, but however, part of your investment strategy also for Juniper Ridge can incorporate a lot of this. We've only expanded about seven point nine percent of our maximum indebtedness. So there is, there is a lot of capacity and room to incorporate a lot of, uh, Borough's goals for the area development. Just not with this development.
Yeah, this development, this development is not required to do anything on Eighteenth, uh, or any improvements down there, so it's kind of outside the bounds of what's required of development.
And Borough would be limited to, uh, projects within the boundaries of the urban renewal area. I think much of the street.
Cooley is in, but Eighteenth is out.
So south of this, Eighteenth is outside of the boundary.
So the next time, we're, we're going to be talking about, uh, potential expansion of this.
We're, our, our options are different things. Yeah, that's, we're starting that conversation later this year.
On December third, we'll bring back an option for you to consider regarding overall Juniper Ridge management and term.
We also have that and then also just with the transportation funding that we have now available, that kind of programmatically, we can look at the. Different, different ways to look at that issue.
I guess that was my point is that that meeting, is there some opportunity to talk a little bit about? Uh, the investment strategy a little bit and, you know, some of the safety concerns that Council Mendez is bringing up. Not necessarily answering all the questions that night, but at least getting clarity about what they are and what some options would be.
Some conversation, what, what can be included and kind of what, what, what can't be included and, and when, when you look at doing any modifications or changes to that area. Definitely do that.
I have, I have, I have a couple of questions. Um, this one's. Geeky, but the maximum indebtedness, does that take into account? The four point whatever, or forty million, does that take into account the, um, publicly owned land now in Juniper Ridge?
Yeah, so the, the forty one million is for the entire existing district, so, um.
But it's like the Public Works Campus isn't generating increment.
But it wasn't generating increment prior to that either, because it was publicly owned land. So all publicly owned land in the Juniper Ridge area does not generate any taxes.
This is in the urban real district, but it just doesn't generate taxes.
So the calculation of maximum indebtedness took that into account.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Imagine that does it change?
Yeah.
That's the set value that, that the urban logic has the ability to spend up to.
Isn't that based, but isn't that based on the increment? And so there wouldn't be increment from the property. So if you.
So it's based on the frozen base of pretty much three hundred acres in two thousand and five. That was just basically raw greenfield land. Um, this is common with urban renewal districts that are trying to spur industrial development on undeveloped land. Because you have to base it on the frozen base associated with. Now, on December third, we will bring back options even regarding the true maximum indebtedness, plant expansion. All those type of things on December third to have you work through that, uh, for your investment strategy. But the forty one point five million is just the, the established base.
I think the frozen base and those calculations would have assumed some sale of land by the city into private hands. Since most of it has been publicly owned since the prior to this.
At one point in time, there's consideration of, of a four year university up in this area as well. So there was, that was, we can, we can bring some history back on kind of how they got to that number if there's interest.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and so the program that we're using here is. Up to seventy five percent of property tax increment generated from new projects, so that would be a huge number, right? Up to ten percent of the total development cost. So it looks like the application is just for the ten percent, like basically up to the maximum. Um, so, but when I look at the application and the, kind of the pro forma, so like the infrastructure cost. Is like. Three million. Um, I guess I'm just wondering, I feel like there should be a little bit more of a basis for awarding, um, the maximum allowable. You know, because there might be, I mean, we're theoretically, there are going to be a lot of other projects that come forward for development assistance. Um, so I don't know. I mean, if it's, if it's not a risk of like maximizing the available development assistance, I guess. For the URA, then maybe it's not an issue, but you know.
So if I, if I think I'm understanding your question, the, the rebate will be based on the value of the assessment at the time by the assessor. So the, the max is four point three, but it could take then, uh, I think I have seventeen years in the, uh, exhibit. If the value is lower, it will take longer, but there is a term limit currently on Juniper Ridge. If it's higher, they would get that rebate quicker. It's only seventy five percent of what the assessor assesses that year at their value.
So if it was a hundred thousand dollars, the maximum they can get paid out that one year, seventy five?
Yes. So that doesn't.
So there's still twenty five left for Borough to use for the purposes.
And, and when the program was created, that was also kind of like, we want to spur development, which we'll still do. But we do need additional increment in order to further like major transportation projects.
So if we said no to this, they would still be responsible for building these, these street improvements? It, it would just be an exaction in what made when they move forward with nothing.
Correct, but in our conversations with the applicant, the, you know, they're a local based company with cash based system. So that four point three million more than likely will be reinvested back into Juniper Ridge.
And by, um, the work that they have done, it was a little above and beyond what was required. Um, where it, it just helps us facilitate getting that port, that, that long rectangle that's on the media western boundary. To move forward towards affordable housing there. We have some more policy work to do in terms of being able to use. Some urban renewal resources from this urban renewal area to support affordable housing, but.
Yes.
Um, but, um, it, it does kind of help us move there a little bit faster.
That was, I think, staff's interest in this was just of trying to get that site ready. And look at the overall cost of development, if that turns into a housing site.
Okay, so I think we're ready for some. Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
Thanks. Um, just from the discussion, you know, I just want to note with the timeline on this, this was, this policy was implemented when literally nobody on the dais was on council. Um, and so I would like to revisit it a little bit, and I'm wondering if it can maybe come in that December third. Meeting, um, just to look at this and making sure that it's aligned with what we're going to be doing in this area. Um, and I'm just going to note that, like, we, we've done this sort of thing with our housing policies and TIF. Where we're very, we're very much almost constantly reevaluating, pausing, trying to look at them again. I think we should do that with this as well. I think it's fair to say, let's look at this, um, now that it's been in place for five years and see if there's anything we need to. And it sounds like we needed to just clean up some language too, that's confusing. So if that's possible for staff to wrap this into the December third, that's what I, um, would recommend or ask for. But otherwise, I'm, I'm fine going forward with what we have in front of us today too.
I appreciate you bringing that up because I have some concerns and would like to see some clarity about purpose and the why behind why the policy exists. I don't think it's, uh, very transparent. You have to maybe dig through some other places if you're just a member of the public and even just makes it frankly easier for council. Um, to remind ourselves about that, so I, I'd support that, at least having a clear pathway on December third of when we're going to get to that. Uh, review, um, pretty quickly, if not then.
Yeah, I think we, I'm going to be coming to December third, there's going to be a series of questions we're going to be asking council around the, the urban real districts, which will lead to further conversations. Including potentially this, so.
Okay. Just one more question, um, about timeline. Uh, so construction on the infrastructure has already begun, is that, is that what I see in the application? Thanks, Jay. Thanks Jade. I'm just curious about construction of the your overall construction timeline, horizontal and vertical.
Uh Jade Mayer, uh CFO of Brooks Resources Corporation here on behalf of TB Bend, uh. Uh the landowner here, um uh the infrastructure is completed, both the Andeside and Talis. Um three of the six buildings are currently under construction, the other three are in various states of uh of planning, getting approval through the city of Bend. Um yeah, we're very excited about this project, uh it's a it's a very significant investment in Jennifer Ridge. When you look at that map that Jonathan had up earlier, we view ourselves very much as partners with you folks, you you have significantly more land holdings in the area. Uh we've recently closed on about ninety five acres of that land from you folks. Um and we have big plans to continue the development and try to bring more light industrial land into that area, so. Specifically with NOCO with with Lot Six, you know, we hope to have that construction completed in the next uh eighteen months roughly.
Are we required to only ask about this project? Cause it's rare that we have.
It is what's before us, so come on, be a little careful about not going too far afield, just from the time perspective.
I'm sure Jade would make time for you if you want to know about this.
But I would say if there's interest, when we come back in that December meeting, if there's interest about the overall policy and kind of direction of what's going on in Jennifer Ridge, we are more than happy to provide some some additional information on that.
Sure. Alright, thank you.
Move to approve a development assistance agreement in substantially the form presented with Taylor Brooks LLC for reimbursement of site development costs for Jennifer Ridge Lot Six in an amount not to exceed four million three hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy seven dollars.
Second.
Okay, moved by number Perkins and seconded by number Morris, all those in favor? Okay. Last item on our agenda.
Thank you all.
Yep.
Borough is asked to approve the Development Assistance Agreement Tax Increment Assistance with Parkway Studios LLC for tax increment assistance related to the development of twenty four residential units. Within the core area tax increment finance area.
Do you need a brief rest or stool maybe?
No. For myself, apologize, Bart, I mean, so.
We don't have a path there.
Again, good evening Chair, members of the agency, uh this is the culmination of the first site specific program that's actually entering into a development agreement. Your staff packet and also the presentation was a lot more than what we normally put on this, but we wanted to be very transparent and open what the terms are and what the project is. Where the project is located is at seventeen Northwest Irving Street, it is in the core area, it is the first kind of major, actually, it is the first multifamily unit development. Um in addition to Jack Straw that is occurring in the core area, so that's a significant milestone. Uh it is near the future Hawthorne Bridge Crossing. Um just to recap of what the project is, it is a five point four million dollar uh twenty four unit multifamily product. The average market rate rent was eighteen hundred dollars, uh the occupancy, uh the certificate of occupancy is expected in twenty twenty seven. This particular project is going to be owned and operated uh in a long term holding by an individual that lives locally. Um they did qualify for the extended rebate, they have dedicated fifty percent of all units at eighty and ninety percent, roughly ten percent eighty, ten percent ninety for twenty four years. The reduced rent averages around fifteen hundred dollars and. In addition, they also are providing local contractors, but then in the conversation since July sixteen, they're also doing uh multifamily market solutions, energy efficiency as well. This is the breakdown, six units studio eighty percent at, or excuse me, eighty percent AMI and six units at ninety percent AMI. Well, the terms of the agreement, uh the owner has to restrict twelve units at um the ninety percent and below with specifically six at eighty percent and six at ninety percent. They have to maintain um rent increases below the statutory maximums, they also have to obtain the Energy Trust Multifamily Market Solutions good. They are going to use at least thirty percent of local contractors and construction, they have to maintain all of these elements, both the rent restrictions and then also the rent increases. For the preceding twelve months prior, and they have to annually certify compliance and pay property taxes. Borough's terms of the agreement are as such. One point two million dollars is the total assistance that was approved, they have elected to use partial uh of that at four hundred and ninety thousand dot four hundred and ninety thousand dollars for system development charge payments to the city of Bend. They will receive the remaining as an additional rebate of seven hundred and forty two thousand dollars uh reversed over twenty three years. The anticipated start date for collection as well as annual certification for affordability is twenty twenty eight, and the termination date will be twenty fifty, which is in correspondence with the TIF plan's termination date. Remedies for noncompliance, there is a clawback provision in your development agreement. The no rebate if the project is not in compliance, no rebate if the property taxes are not paid, and then Borough has the option to clawback prior year rebates for noncompliance.
This project's awesome, I'm really excited about it.
Yeah.
It would be cool to see.
Is it the Redman builder, am I remembering right? The the Redman builder, right out of Redmond, I think, yeah.
Yeah, the builder, yeah.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for Jonathan? May I agree, it's just exciting that I have a project that's come all the way through the whole process, you know, in the war area, so.
Well.
Further discussion about anything, anybody?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Alright.
I move to approve a tax increment assistance agreement in substantially the form presented. With Parkway Studios LLC for the government or for the payment of City of Bend. System development charges and annual reimbursement of tax increment in amount not to exceed one million two hundred and thirty two thousand nine hundred and forty three dollars over twenty three years.
Second.
The move by Councilor Platt, seconded by Councilor Perkins. Let me just, I'll see. All those in favor?
Alright.
Yeah, great. With that, we are adjourned seven minutes ahead of my prediction.
You forgot, great, call me.